All right, good evening and welcome to the Quarry Valley Unified Union School District Board Meeting. It is Monday, October 17th. If you would all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Mike makes the motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. General public comment. We don't have any public here with us. And there's no public online. So we'll move on. Old business, any old business to come before the board. New business. Oh, Joe's here, so we'll start with Joe.
Joe Harrington, we're talking about the Athletic Leadership Conference.
Okay, yes. What would you like to know?
Can you just give us, just give us an overview of who's going, where you're going, and what you're doing, what the expectation of the conference is?
Sure. It's an Athletic Leadership Conference. We have gone on and off for the past, I don't know, 20 years. Obviously, we have not gone for the past three years because of COVID. It is an overnight conference in Burlington. And there are various schools throughout the state will be there. Over 200 student participants, I believe, at this point. We are taking eight students, eight high school students, four boys and four girls. And it's a leadership conference. They have activities for the kids. They have guest speakers. They have adult facilitators who just really just talk about leadership and the leadership roles within athletics.
Are both chaperones meals that are going?
Our PE teacher, soccer coach is going. I am planning on going also during the day but not spending the night. We do not have a female chaperone going at this time.
Okay. And the parents are aware of that?
Parents are aware of that.
Okay.
And I could, you know, I can look to try to find one, at least during the day. I cannot send anybody else up for the night, but if there was a preference to have a female up there, I could try to do that.
I think it would just be important maybe on the permission slip to say that there's not a female chaperone. I don't know, we've always been really clear about having a male and a female chaperone. I don't know, how do other members of the board feel about?
I'm sorry, we are sending, I apologize too. I just found out earlier this week, we are planning on sending a group up too. We've always sent a group up there as well. And we will have a male and female chaperone to go up. David Morin-Catman will, our athletic director and his wife, who run our athletic council, will be going up as well.
Okay, okay.
So someone from Quarry Valley, there will be a female Quarry Valley.
Okay, and maybe that's important, just-
That was gonna be my question, is if Morin-Catman could actually cover as the female chaperone since it is two Quarry Valley schools going.
Yeah, if Morin's okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we just have to just make sure she understands that it's more of a Quarry Valley than, it's not a Polton or West Rutland, so.
Right. I just think we have to be conscientious of that. So I only had, we only have West Rutlands before us, so how many students are, is Polton taking? Because as an overnight trip, that's why it's end to be approved?
Right. And I apologize, as I said, I didn't realize, we haven't gone in two years because of COVID. And I just found out, I was out last week, or the week before with COVID, but I believe we're having eight as well. Usually we send four and four.
Okay. Is everyone good with approving that, those together? Okay. Are there any other questions for Joe or Joe? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve overnight field trip to Burlington for the Athletic Conference with eight going from West Rutland and eight attending from Polton High School and chaperones from Polton and West Rutland.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next field trip is Bronx Zoo. I'd like to go to the Bronx Zoo. I like the Bronx Zoo.
You can be a chaperone. Yeah, it's a day trip, June 8th. So they've already started fundraising.
All right. Motion would be in order to approve the day trip out of state for Polton Elementary to the Bronx Zoo.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Questions, comments?
What's the date on that again?
June 8th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I did put in our board report too. I was trying to be, we are going on a senior trip this year, either in May, probably mid to late May or early June, but I know, I don't know if we meet before November 15th with the policy there. It says just to let the board know. So I did put that in my board report, that our senior class is planning on going one this spring.
Okay.
Overnight trip. They're obviously in planning stages right now, but-
Okay. So overnight, like what, overnight to the next state, overnight to Canada, overnight-
No, I mean, out of the country. We're looking, I think they're looking at Boston. I, there was an email that went out a couple of weeks ago that they were like a couple places. I think it was Boston and maybe the Jersey Shore or Ocean, I can't remember off the top of my head. There was three, three things they were looking at, trying to see what they needed to do to go to those places.
Okay. And what about other senior classes? Do we anticipate those will be going out of state?
Ours are overnight. Our Proctor senior class, I just got a permission or a form that they're planning to go to Boston, to the Six Flags Springfield area, but they were not gonna go overnight.
Okay.
I know some of the seniors wanted to, but that was still up for discussion, so that would be presented to you guys next board meeting.
Okay.
Their plan.
And Joe Harrington, I don't wanna, I'm gonna have to defer to you. Have they mentioned anything to you?
Yeah, I don't even think they've started the discussion yet. I would imagine that would be coming up soon.
Okay.
And Lisa, we're doing our trip to Boston, sixth grade, which will, is already booked and ready to go for-
Right, that's in May.
May 19th, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so a motion would be, well, I mean, do we need a motion to preliminary approve that they're going out of state? We just need notification?
Right, right.
Okay.
It's up the road.
Right. So that Polton High School will be, anticipate traveling out of state for their senior trip, and the other high schools will be giving something in November with what their senior classes anticipate for a celebration. All right. It's fun to plan trips. It's nice to have those conversations again. Approval of the minutes, a motion will be in order to approve the September 2022 Quarry Valley minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Any questions, comments, corrections?
On the motions, like for the van, it says with one opposition, one voting no. Why don't we put the name in there?
Do you want your name in there?
Shouldn't it be, no, if there's only like, it says pass, but then if there was say eight voted no and two voted yes, with the two yes, you know what I mean, whatever?
Well, so in the past, some people didn't want their names put in if they had voted in opposition, but if you want your name put in-
Yes, please.
Okay. So do you want me to have her correct that, that you voted no? Okay. Was that the only place? Or you voted no a lot that night?
Lot of money being spent.
So that Tom won-
Just from here, you know what I mean? Like if it's only one or two people that vote, everybody votes no and two vote yes, have the two yes in, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's just some people didn't want their names like that. I mean, I don't, I don't care.
You get credit for what you did, you know, you can't-
Yeah, I listen, I own it. So, all right, so going forward, just for the recording secretary, that Tom would like his name recorded if he is in opposition. And then if we can just correct that in the September 19th minutes that he voted in opposition of the purchase of the van. With those corrections, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of warrants, should receive your warrants via your GRCSU email. Any questions about warrants should be directed to Lewis. A motion would be in order for the approval of warrants.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report, Mr. Sal.
Thanks, Lisa. I have a few items to discuss. I know we have budgets and some other things in the executive session, so I would be quick. A lot of this is for information purposes only. I do wanna just quickly just highlight that the school, all Quarry Valley schools have completed their MAPS testing, the fall assessments. We are looking at collecting that data, and then our goal would be to have a report to the board, probably at the December board meeting. If we can do it in November, that'd be great, but we'll probably bring it back to the December board meeting for MAPS discussion. Take a look at where we're at last year as opposed to this year, but we'll have that information for you. Along the assessment line, I did put this in there, as many of you have heard, we had, the state has made a shift away from S-Back. We did receive a memo about a week and a half ago from Secretary French. There's not a lot of information out there. We do know that we've shifted from S-Back to, sorry, just gonna mute Joe. There you go. They shifted from S-Back to Cognia, and I know that when we shared the information with our building admins as well as the staff, there really is not a lot of information out there. So I think the memo just briefly explained just the reasons why they made that shift, which I kinda highlighted in the report. I think the concern that our staff has had is what that will look like, what impact it'll have in terms of what they're doing right now with curriculum work or lesson planning. And really, the answer is no. It should have no impact, because all these assessments are linked to the Common Core standards. So therefore, the same standards we were working on for curriculum that was applied to the S-Back will also apply to Cognia. I think really just for us, it's more in terms of just seeing what that may look like. We do, you know, believe it's gonna be a computer-based assessment, so just familiarizing ourselves with this. We also know that one of the things, the items that S-Back had that a lot of our schools were taking advantage of were the interim-based assessments, which allowed us kind of periodically, you know, get a better understanding in terms of where our students were at and, you know, what shifts we need to make to curriculum or to our lessons. That has been taken away, obviously, because we are no longer in a contract S-Back. Cognia has hinted that they may have something in the future but do not have anything currently for us. So, right, so we are gonna continue with our curriculum work, with our lessons, things are gonna move on as planned, and then as we have more information, we will communicate that to the board, to the admins, as well as to the community. The last piece I just wanted to discuss, or the second last piece, would be just our strategic plan update. So on October 3rd, we did meet for the first time to discuss strategic planning that was held at West Rutland. I do wanna thank, you know, our building administrators, Liz Colty, Jase Linker, Jim McLemore, Joe DeBarnes, Chris Caligiri, as well as board members Lisa, Meiser, Mike Moser. And then we had a community member, Pam Berlin-Game, and then we had Kristi Papandrea and Matt Olnek, who were in attendance. So just wanna thank, you know, those individuals who were there for their input and the feedback. Any board member, community member, staff member who would like to participate, our next meeting is November 7th at 5:00 at West Rutland, so you're still able to be participating in that. If you'd like to be a part of that, reach out to Christine McGinnis, or you can just talk to one of the building administrators, and they can just, you know, get your information as well. But, you know, as I said, we would love to have more people out here just to kind of help us with this important work, as we kinda chart the next five years for not just our Quarry Valley schools, but for the SU overall. All right? And like I said, as we kind of get into the more, the meat of the work, we'll have updates for the board. But this really was a, just an opportunity to take a look at the portrait of graduates, re-familiarize yourself with the five competencies, as well as to talk about some of the priority areas and just, you know, collect some data. But that'll be the next step on November 7th, where we really start kind of filling that, you know, filling the buckets in, so. All right. And the last piece, just with the VSB, VSA Annual Conference Fall Meeting, just held up October 20th, 21st at Lake Maury. I know that a lot of you are not able to attend, but there will be a recorded, I think a record as many sessions as possible. And once we do have a recorded that, I know VSB will send that out, but I also will send that out to the boards as well, just for, you know, for you to take a look at at your own leisure.
Okay. All right, and principal reports are in the pocket. Did anyone have a question for any of the principals? All right, hearing then, we'll move on to finance. Lewis.
All right, budgets. So the budget was emailed out today. I believe it also is in the paper packets. It's only one page. Does everybody have a copy? If anybody needs copies, I do have copies. Anybody need a copy?
This is, yeah.
I'll take it.
All right. Anybody else need a copy? Okay. So over the last month, I met with each of the principals to go over their building needs, and explain the budget process to them. We went over what's going on in their building for staffing, the discussions that we had at the, at the board level. Each meeting was about an hour, just going over what's going on in each of their buildings. Based on that, we put together a preliminary first draft, taking into account all of, all the discussions that we had. Some of the stuff is included in the budget, some of it's included as items to consider that will go under, that we'll talk about more in executive session if it involves staffing. After that, we did meet as a whole with the, all five Quarry Valley administrators and Chris, and just to discuss what the budget looked like after we put all the preliminary information in, just some ongoing discussions on things that we need to look at and continue to look at, both this year and for future years. So what you have in front of you is the preliminary draft. It is only two pages, and that was based on a discussion that we had earlier this year where we looked at, we talked about looking at the budget as more of a higher level and not looking at each, each individual line item or each individual school's line items, but trying to get into more of a Quarry Valley as a whole budget standpoint. And so the way that the budget is built, it is built at the detail level, and then it's just being pulled into a summary, summary level, and that's what you have in front of you on page two. So just looking at the first page, which is the summary of changes, what I've done is I've highlighted all of the, all of the major items that are affecting the budget. So total expense is up by 575K or 3%. And based on board feedback at the first budget discussion meeting, the board wanted us to bring back a budget that was no more than 3% increase, and that's what you have in front of you today. Total education spending is up 178,000 or 1%. And the reason why the education spending is up less than its expense is because we do have a pretty significant surplus again. Last year's surplus was $814,000. As you remember, our FY21 surplus was $1.3 million, but the board did decide to put, based, and that went to the voters, 500,000 into a, and I'm sorry, 50% into a capital improvement fund, which was 650,000, and then up to 20% into a, another reserve fund for co-curricular and extracurricular. And so we put 250,000 into that fund. So after you deducted those two funds, the remaining surplus that got applied to revenue was 416,000. And that is on, that is on page two, under prior year surplus revenue at the top, if you wanna see those numbers. So we had a $416,000 surplus that was applied in, to the FY23 budget. Right now, we have an $814,000 surplus being applied in the FY24 budget. So that's an extra almost $400,000 in revenue right now. Now, the board can decide, and we'll discuss this at probably tonight and probably at future meetings, is do we wanna take a portion of that revenue or a portion of that surplus and put another item on the ballot and ask the voters to put some of that, some more of that away for either capital improvements or some other purposes. The benefits of doing that is that we know we all have projects in our buildings that are, that, and some of those are too large to do on an annual basis with our repairs budget. And so putting that money away, if we need to replace a boiler or a heating system, something big like that, then we don't have to either lease it or go out to bond. We have that money tucked away for one of those rainy days or a roof in one of our larger buildings that could be a pretty big expense. So that's the first benefit. The second benefit is if we don't put any of that into a reserve fund, and that is all up to the taxpayers, we can't do that without taxpayer approval. If we don't put that into a reserve fund, right now, we're using $814,000 as a revenue. If we don't end this year with a surplus that's that large, which I don't imagine that those surpluses will continue, then when we look at FY25 budget, if we only end with a $400,000 surplus, then we'll be looking at a $400,000 revenue shortfall to just to start the, start the budget off. So that's why, so surpluses are great, but it's also a negative to use it all as revenue because if you don't keep it up, you're gonna have spikes and dips in, in your education spending and your tax rate. So I would recommend that we put at least a portion of that on the ballot to use for, for another day. GRCSU assessments and bill backs are still pending. Those are currently at the, at FY23 amounts. We did take a quick look at the FY24 budget at the SU meeting, but due to other priorities at that meeting, there was the board retreat. We sort of brushed through that pretty quickly, and we're gonna spend more time at the October SU board meeting in focusing on the details and taking a closer look at that. So when we come back in November, we will have those numbers into the local district budgets, so we can take a better look at how those are impacting our local budgets. Anything, there are also other things that are pending, and anything that is pending is still at the FY23 level. So we know, we just had bill backs, vocational amounts are still pending, tuition revenue is still pending, and probably just a few other minor things. But the big thing is going to be the tuition revenue, the assessments, the SU bill backs, and then the, the vocational amount. All the cost increases from the settled teacher and ESP agreements are included in this. We did settle for the teacher contract for four years last year, so that's having an impact on this budget. And then ESP agreements, we do have a three-year settlement. So it's good to have those amounts, they're already built in at actuals. Increases in the SRO cost of approximately $12,000, and that's been steadily increasing over the last few years. We have an increase of 10% built in for health insurance. That is just a guesstimate right now. We have not gotten any updates yet from VHI. They are hoping to file their rates this month, and so hopefully we can get a better idea once that's done. Last year, we saw a 5.2% increase, but the years before that, we were seeing double-digit increases. And just to be cautious in this first round, I went with 10%, hoping that'll come back down to single digits, and hopefully we'll know more by the next month. So that is resulting in $171,000 increase in this budget. And then the only other item is there was some, there was a regular outside placements that were built in here as tuition, tuition that we were paying out, that's no longer in, so that is resulting in pretty significant savings. And then that bottom section is summary of changes, maintenance projects. So at the, at the SU, at the last Quarry Valley meeting when we discussed the budget, the board had asked that we list some of the projects that are on the horizon and not put them in the budget, and so that we can review these at the board meeting to see which projects we want to take out of that reserve fund, which projects we wanna prioritize to be done now versus in the coming years. So I've just listed some of the main ones that came up during my meetings. There's some window replacements and tinting going on at Polton for about $40,000. Polton has been inquiring about generators for the last few years. Their buildings are listed as emergency response buildings, but I believe that's the case with all of our buildings, probably in our town. So that's something that the board could to talk, to discuss and consider. Proctor Elementary is looking at resurfacing their parking lot. We don't have any estimates for that yet. They're also looking at, Proctor Elementary is looking at updating their security cameras and access system. We're still working on an estimate for that. Proctor has some heating and plumbing upgrades happening. Those are only about $20,000. And Polton High School is also working on trying to get some gym projector screen estimates to update their, their sound system and projection system in their gym. And they're still working on estimates and potentially funding that through local, through their, their annual budget, but not pos, not positive yet, depending on the price.
Okay.
So looking at page two, we've talked about many of these, the highlights on here already as far as the totals. So what we did was, the budget is broken down by school, and on the detail sections by school and then by department, or what we call function. And so each department, like construction, guidance, health services, has its own budget. So on the second page, what we've done is we've totaled each of those sections for all of the schools combined. And so what you can, you, if you look at the first column, you have what we spent in FY22, which was the year that just ended. You have our budget for FY23, which is the year we're in right now, and then what we're proposing for FY24 budget and what that variance is. Any questions?
Not this year, but next year, can we get like each individual, I know you wanna make it one budget for the voters, but can we see like what West Rutland wanted, what Proctor wanted, what, you know, if Jade cheated and Kristen cheated?
Not me.
One's way up and one, you know what I mean? You know what I mean?
I do have that-
If we see something out of control, hey, what's this? Or, 'cause this is, nobody knows what this budget is here for core members. I mean, it's just one big, you know what I mean?
Right. Because we, when we talked about that, I mean, I think Lewis has that information, but that, that's what's going to-
Yeah, not this year. I, where, that, I get that, but I was like, next, like, just, you know what I mean? That way, if we see one school's out of whack with something, you know, what's going on here, what's going on there, stuff like that.
Well, I mean, they could provide that to us in the next board meeting that-
No, I don't wanna screw up the budget.
Well, no, I mean, I already, I have it.
Yeah. But he could tell us like, Proctor highs up, Polton Elementary's down, or whatever. He has that information now, just based on, on what we've done so far. So if you wanna have that, he can provide that to you.
No, I don't wanna screw up nothing, but no. You know what I mean? Like-
Yeah, and-
West Rutland Heating for, was up 40,000 or down 30,000 or, you know what I mean?
And so one of the reasons why we discuss doing it at this higher level is because the needs are different per building, and, and we are looking at those differences on a per building, per line basis, but we, we have a better understanding of what's going on. We're having conversations with the principals and when we're questioning the lines. And so we wanted to get, we wanted to focus more on a Quarry Valley level than at the, at the micro level, just because you may see one school's going up a lot more this year, another school is, is going down. And so those are decisions that we've made as a team, be based on the needs for those schools.
I would like to know, you know what I mean?
Yep, and I do have those details.
Yeah, just like, I mean, I get it, go to the voters with this, but, you know, all of a sudden, somebody's spending way more in heating fuel or electricity, whatever, you know, what caused that? Is it something we can fix down the road or, you know what I mean? It seems like we can get on it quicker than that, but this year's fine. I mean, I get it, so.
Any other questions? And we do have stuff to discuss for executive session as well.
Anybody online have any questions for Lewis? Okay.
It's the only question.
Okay.
Talking about the winners, that Polton Elementary schools-
Talking about the windows at Polteney Elementary, is that replacing all the windows, Lewis, in the school building? Or is that just spec?
No, typically, the maintenance department, they have a rotation and they've been working on this for a number of years. And I believe these ones are for the, the elementary school, the high school.
Elementary school. We started last year.
Yep.
This is kind of howling.
So they're, they're working on updating, they are working on updating all of the windows, but this, this number does not include all of them because they've been working on this for at least, I think, the last two years.
So how old are our oldest windows, do you know, roughly?
I think they're original windows. I think he said they were quarter pane and he was looking at going to three-quarter pane, is that?
Yes, yeah. And we do, there are many already installed, so.
How many more do you think you got total, roughly?
I don't know. We were, we were pretty close to having them done.
With this little here?
This may include the high school as well, this number, the 40,000.
The tinting was costing us a bit more. But again, we started it last year, so.
So does the tinting include, tinting, does that include windows that are already installed? Or, so we go back and re-tint those and?
No, we're, well, we're doing it as we replace windows, we're tinting. So any of the old ones that we know are going to come out are not tinted.
And this is an item that we're still discussing with their, I don't know if Chris, if you wanted to address this at all. But this is just one of the, one of the things that was addressed during the security reviews for tinting for security purposes.
I know, I know tinting is important and for security, it's important, but I just hate to see spend money on tinting that we're going to take a window out next year. That's.
Oh, no, we wouldn't be tinting old windows. We'd only be tinting the new windows. Yep. I don't believe it, Doug.
Kristen?
Actually, sorry, I did, I, you have a question. The SRO cost, um, that, you said that's, that's going up, an increase, right? Of $12,000 for the next year? What's, do we sort of, does anybody have a sort of idea where, what's the max we want to see on that cost? Like, do we have a threshold where it's, I mean, we're sharing one, right? So what's our threshold where that's no longer worth the cost, I guess?
What's the total cost?
It's, I think, 69 or 72,000. 72,000 is what we have budgeted.
And they provide a vehicle, right? We don't have to.
Yeah, so we're paying an hourly rate. I believe it's 46.50 an hour. And then we're paying a vehicle fee per month. And I believe that's $150 per month.
Do they interact with the kids at all or?
Oh, yes.
I would say, if you would ask us two years ago. But I think with our newest SRO, I think it's doing a phenomenal job.
Agreed.
Within our schools, within our communities, and really looking to bring programming back to our students. So I think it's, it's been, it's been, it's been nice to see, you know? And we understand that obviously, sharing one across five buildings. But we also have to look at it, it's not as if we're looking at a station, this individual at the entrance. It's really more just, you know, it helps out in a variety of things, whether it be truancy issues, attendance issues, welfare checks. And like I said, you know, Tom Current is just fantastic. I mean, I think we could ask for a better SRO. I think in my 30 years, I think dealing with SROs, I think Tom is, if not, one of, if not the best I've ever worked with, so.
Yeah, I think we've really gotten lucky.
Yes, sir. Did you have some concerns, Kristen, about the position or?
No.
Okay.
No, I just worry, I just want to double check that, you know, the other side of my question then is, should we have more than one and spend more money if we think that it's really needed, I guess? So I just wanted to hear from folks if, if it's working out, if it's really good, that's great. I don't have a problem with it. I just want to know, is it too little, spread too thin for what we're paying? Or should we invest in, you know, more, another person, for example, or?
Well, it's a little bit.
If it's working out well, it's what it is, and I'm fine with that.
It's a little bit like Kelly's services. So we're paying that fee and then they're paying him. So, you know, there's that kind of up charge, I guess. I think we need to go through one full year with him and see what programming and everything kind of looks like and then maybe discuss it next year. I mean, maybe building administrators want to address what they think or how they're feeling about working with Tom.
I thoroughly enjoy it. He's actually coming in the next couple of weeks to work with our sixth graders who do patrol for the school. To work with them on basic first aid CPR, in addition to just always being there when I need him for any and everything. It's been really nice.
Yeah. He's done stop the bleed training with my staff. He's secured two stolen bikes from our property. He has showed up at our dances. Like, I think that that would be the one area that if we were to say, like, be able to get him some more money. Because I think right now, if we have dances or homecoming in which he kind of flexes that time a little bit. And so I would feel better if we could maybe incentivize other ways than taking away from the school to get him at those things. Because it's nice to have a resource officer around for that stuff.
But we could still look to contract, I would rather the chairs department for events too. So it would just be on Tom.
Yep.
We've done that in the past as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think they're just.
Sure.
Go ahead, Joe.
So he's been very, yeah, he's been very responsive when, you know, he shares his time everywhere. He, if we need him, he's over as soon as he can get there. Is he spread thin? Absolutely, as one would expect he would be. But he's been very responsive when we've needed him.
Polteney?
I echo everything that people have said. He just is, he's great. He could be in West Rutland. I could give a call. He'll be there as soon as he, well, I don't want to say five minutes. No, he is, he's there when you need him. And we've had some really difficult situations already that we wouldn't have been able to handle without him.
And he's pretty well-versed on school safety issues too, which is, which is good.
And his demeanor with the students, parents, staff, it's just, you know, like I said, he comes in with a golf shirt and, you know, khakis. And it's not the full, you know, it's that friendly, I mean, if he has to, he can do what needs to be done. But just that appearance, it's not a, you know.
Military.
Yeah, it's more, and he's, I mean, even this week, like you said, he's got to be in Proctor tomorrow. He goes, I'll, I'll try to stop in on the way home tomorrow afternoon or, you know, just to pop in and say hi or, you know, trying to bounce around between. But if he can't, you know, but he knows there's an emergency, he'll be there. I just think it's, he's been, he's been great. And just, we're using him as a mentor too with some of our students, just, you know, and he wants to do that stuff. And, you know, some of those tougher kids, and he was in the military. So, you know, he can talk to, and we got one student he's working with about, you know, if you want to get in the military, what, you know, avenues to use to get through there and that type of stuff, so.
Yeah, I think we're really fortunate.
Very fortunate.
Interested in interacting and really being a part of our Corey Valley community.
That's great, okay. Thank you.
All right, so everything else Lewis has will, for executive session. We'll move on to contract recommendations. For professional staff, we have Jonathan Place at Proctor Elementary as a point six-two music teacher in its prorated, prorated and 94 days or for 94 days?
94 days is what he's working.
Okay. And support staff, Megan Watkins, Polteney Elementary as a para. Any questions about professional or support staff? All right, hearing none, we'll go on to extracurricular. Pam Chellis, Polteney High, ninth grade advisor. Susan Harris, Polteney ninth grade co-advisor. Jennifer Deppert, seventh grade class advisor. And I'm just going to say that Jennifer is giving her stipend back to her class. So yay to Jennifer. Jessica Oberg, Polteney High School sophomore class advisor. Robin Alt, Polteney High School sophomore co-advisor. Kathleen Jones, Polteney High School after-school coordinator. Oh, I'm going to kill this name. Kira's, Kyra's?
Carrie Semenade.
Carrie Semenade.
Wes Rutland Standards Board member. Jill Dutton, Wes Rutland Standards Board member. Tanya Erickson, Wes Rutland Designation Imagination advisor. Zach Hampton, Wes Rutland Jazz Band director. Zach Hampton, Wes Rutland Marching Band director. Phil Henry, Wes Rutland Festivals Chorus Director. Phil Henry, Wes Rutland Select Chorus Director. Mary Margaret, Wes Rutland National High School advisor. Taylor Sherman, Wes Rutland Freshman Class Co-Advisor. Jessica Adat, Wes Rutland Freshman Co-Advisor. Matthew Olink, Wes Rutland Sophomore Class Co-Advisor. Michaela Taylor, Wes Rutland Sophomore Class Co-Advisor. Brandon Bailey, Wes Rutland Junior Class Co-Advisor. Jenna Abitell, Wes Rutland Junior Class Co-Advisor. Emily Brooks, Wes Rutland Senior Class Co-Advisor. Jill Dutton, Wes Rutland Senior Class Co-Advisor. Matthew Sereni, Wes Rutland JV Girls Basketball Coach. Carl Sereni, Wes Rutland Varsity Girls Basketball Coach. Ally Sereni, Wes Rutland Varsity Boys Basketball Coach. Lori Sereni, Proctor Elementary Peer Leadership Advisor. Danielle Fagan, Proctor Elementary Standards Board Member. Any question about extracurricular appointments? Hearing none, a motion would be, Kristen?
Sorry, it takes me a second to find the hand. Just, can somebody just tell me what the Destination Imagination advisor does? I haven't heard of that before, I don't think.
Yep, Kristen, I can speak to that. It is a after-school program. Tanya is not on our staff. It's a after-school program similar to Odyssey of the Mind. Our, our Destination Imagination team has, has accolades across the state. They've actually are quite well-accomplished. And it's a real asset to our elementary students. Gives them a real opportunity to, to work on extensions of, of, of divergent thinking and peer leadership. It's, it's a really wonderful program that, that we do after school.
Thanks, sounds great.
Okay, a motion would be in order to approve the contract recommendations as read.
I'll make that motion.
Comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Policies for second read. B2, Board Goal Setting and Evaluation. F10, 18-year-old Students. G1, Curriculum Development and Coordination. G3, Student Trips. G4, Selection of Library Materials. G11, Animal Dissection. G13, Title I Comparability. So those are all for second reads. And the only one I had a question about was G4. Because it only says, "Library Media Specialist" on here. And we do have paras in some of our schools. And I just wonder what, if that, if we should include paras or not? What does it say?
He said paras who are acting in the role of school area?
Yes, yes, yeah. So it says, "The library media specialist may consult with faculty." So should it say in parentheses or slash para?
Or and/or designate, or.
Okay, and/or designate, yeah, I guess.
The library would be licensed to have a library, right?
Right.
So a para would not be?
No. But we have people that are in positions acting in that capacity that have been for some time. So it gives the impression sometimes that they are.
Mike, just to give you a, our librarian, we split between the elementary school, but she teaches a class first block and then we used to go to the elementary school. So the paras in there, like from 10:30 on or 11:00. And if a teacher needs to discuss, nine times out of 10, they'll see them during the day instead of, because our librarian's teaching first thing in the morning. So it just, things like that, just.
Yeah.
I mean, she passes it on to the librarian, but it's, that's how, that's what happens in our building.
But I just, like, I think perhaps we don't even have a librarian, so we only have paras. So maybe if we could, okay.
So, so, sorry, just?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, so I'm, I want to be super clear so I can let Eric know that if it says, "The library media specialist or designate may consult with faculty, the student body, et cetera," yeah, after that, where you're thinking, getting that in? Okay, okay, thanks.
Did anyone have any questions, comments, changes for the second reads? Because those will come to the SU board then for approval.
Can I ask a question on it? On that one, it does say, "Schools with fewer than 300 students shall employ elite library media specialists on a prorated basis." Doesn't that imply that, mean that they shall do that?
We've had this conversation a few times. And we should.
Shall, does not necessarily maintain, make it so, it's a.
It's not a mandate.
It's not a mandate.
That's not my question. Is it a mandate?
Shall is a maybe.
Okay.
Can.
All right, first reads, Admission of Resident Students. Policy on Nondiscrimatory Mascots and School Branding. Role and Adoption of School Board Policies. Do we have, is there a list of schools that are on the BPA hot list for mascots?
We can get a list if you'd like.
Okay.
So I do know that one of our schools has regularly appeared in articles down in front, Vermont Digger, WCX. So I do believe that Wes Rutland is on a list.
Okay.
But we had to take a look at that, so.
Because I think that before this policy is adopted, and I, I understand it has to be adopted in, by January.
Well, so what happens in January? It's either we adopt a policy or this, this policy just goes into effect.
Right.
That's right, so it's just.
But we have the ability to put the procedures in place.
Correct.
And so I would like us to be very clear about the procedures that we put in place. And when they were taking public comments, I don't know if anybody else wrote, but I did write extensively to them when they accepted public comments. And one of my biggest concern is, and no one from the state board or school board associate, no one has addressed it, but it does not say that someone, you have to live within our district to be appalled by one of our mascots. I could reside in California and think that your mascot is appalling and violating whatever this policy is, and I can appeal it. It doesn't say how many times I can peel it, appeal it. Those were all things that they asked, they asked when they took comments on. All things that I wrote to and I hope others wrote to as well. Because I think those are huge holes that they have left within this policy that, and we've seen this before with these other groups around the country that come together and start attacking organizations. We see it now with libraries. We have people that come in with their phones and they start filming. And then they want to tell you that it's a public place, don't tell us what we can and can't do. That doesn't say we can't enter it. If it doesn't say I can't enter it, I can't. All of these people with their woke ideas. And you don't need to send me your letters because I said the word woke. But I think that it has to be very clear that, I, I think you have to have some relationship to us to be coming and appealing one of our mascots. I'm not quite really sure that I'm quite interested in someone from Oregon that thinks one of our mascots is, is appalling or upsetting or whatever it is that they think it is. Because I, and I think. Because I, and I think those are things that we have to be really clear about when we start writing those procedures. And how many times we're going to look at them? Are we going to do it quarterly? Are we going to do it, you know, is someone going to be able to come in here every month and appeal it? Are we going to do it during board meetings, those kinds of things, so?
So you're looking for procedural?
Yeah, and that's up to us to write, which, once again, I mean, so every district's going to have their own procedure, how they handle it, right? So, I mean, this is just a big hullabaloo, in my opinion, from the State Board of Education. And you can save your letters on that, that you send to me as well, so. Anyway, those are my two cents on that. And I'm not saying that there aren't mascots out there that perhaps need to be looked at, but I just think that this was a rushed job because the State Board of Education decided to get involved in something that a local board was out of control with. And so now we're all feeling the wrath of that.
West Rutland's mascot's offensive?
So like I said, I just, the article, it was Vermont Digger's last spring, just identified, because of the Golden Horde and just because it does, you know, links to a group of people. And so it just said one of these schools on the list is Wes Rutland, and so that was it, so.
Who put us on the list?
State.
That I don't know, Tom.
Who?
State Board. Because somebody showed it to them.
But I think we all have history that we can go back to and see why mascots were created the way that they were or the names that you wore and like that. And so I think it's important as we move along that we have that information and we share it with board members so that if something like this should come up, that, you know, we have that. Because, I don't know.
Lisa, if I could, and for Tom and Mike and the general public, Matt Olnick, one of our social studies teachers, his civics class is doing a very deep dive into the history of the Golden Horde and interviewed a number of Wes Rutland citizens going back as far as they could to do some history behind it.
Sure.
And Matt has taken it into, and made it kind of an action initiative for his civics class. So at some point I told him he may be asked, or his students, or both, could be asked if they needed to, to come to the Board to give a, what I feel is a pretty detailed history of what they could find looking at generations of Wes Rutlandites to say, this is where, we're hearing lots of different origins, but they have gone back to some historians to ask what their understanding was of it.
Are they talking with Bill Hareby at all?
I believe they have, yes.
Okay, because he did one ten minutes point in the back.
Yeah.
Seventies, eighties, something like that, it's the same kind of thing.
So I think, I think that's great, because I think that, you know, not, not everything was rooted in rudeness or being disingenuous to populations, so.
I think that's very much an opinion.
Okay.
So Lisa, to clarify, just related specifically to this policy wording, what you're commenting on is we as a board should come up with procedure that acts up this policy, but do you have any wording that you want me to take note of or adding to, or anybody else for this particular policy as it is right now?
No, no, I just wanted the Board to be aware that we either adopted or becomes adopted January one and knowing that it is a hot button in some areas, I think we should have the procedures in place in the event that that happens, so. But I, no, I don't have, I think it's fine to use it as the, as it came down, as open-ended as it is, so.
Okay.
All right, moving on, future agenda items, you can send agenda items to Chris, myself, or Christine, but keeping in mind that we are in budget session, so, but let's keep it. Our eye on the prize of the budget. We do have an executive session for personnel for the budget, so if there is nothing else.
Make the motion.
Kristin?
Just a really quick reminder that the communication plan is out there for your feedback, so if you've had a chance to look at it and have comment you want to send my way, I appreciate that, that's all.
Okay. All right, we are going to recess for five minutes and then we're going to be going into executive session. Those of you that are online, Chris will be sending you a link for executive session.
They should have already received it.
Oh, you should have received it. Did everyone receive it? Okay, and those that are members of the public, thank you very much, and we will see you later.